I just thought about that after the.
No, no, no.
Okay.
I'll call the August 16th Common Council meeting order Malicourt Police Call the role.
Mayor Olson.
Here.
Alderman Hopeur.
Here.
Alderwoman Eichman.
Here.
Alderwoman Wilhelm is not present. Alderwoman Hanneman.
Here.
Alderman Barber.
Here.
Alderman Nelson.
Here. The Coram please rise and join the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is B1, Citizens Comment Period. Any citizen wishing to speak, please rise, come forward, give us your name and address and tell us what you'd like to tell us.
Leland Dusky, good evening. Mayor Leland Dusky, 83 West Winston Way. I want to thank John Nelson for his effort in getting the steps put in in front of the Rock Building. However, there are some other issues that have to be corrected on that issue. For instance, we need to put some type of crosswalk in front of that step so that people know from a distance that there is a step there. You cannot see it unless you put some crosswalks in there, maybe hashes, yellow, white. And the other thing that I would like to see is to put stainless steel railings up on that type of sidewalk to keep people from falling off and running up and down in between the cars. It's not the best thing. And since the city was the one that approved that improper two-foot, I think the city can afford to put that thing in there the proper way. Item 17, you're going to get some more park property, but I'm looking at this park we've got and it seems that we spent $400,000 for the, no, $600,000 for a pleasantries building and then they had to add 400,000. Now, I have no really definite numbers, but this is what I'm hearing from people. And I don't understand why it's costing us so much money to work in the parks. A million dollars? Ridiculous. And one of the things you should be considering is to put a lot of trees in there. You can always cut them off, but there's no trees. It's bare land almost. That's a shame. We've had it, what, for about five, six years and nobody's doing anything? And then recently I rode down 92nd Street and it says, "Fresh oil on the road." I don't understand it. If you've got fresh oil on the road and it rains, it washes it off and it's bad for the environment. I don't understand all that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Mr. Pelkey, good evening.
Good evening. Andy Pelkey, 9320 West Grandview Court. I have unfortunately only seven copies of this because I'm a newbie, so I didn't know to bring more than seven. But let me at least give you. So my concern starts with our assessment contract that we have with our new assessor. And what I've made is a copy of page two and page three of this assessment contract. On page two, it says, "Item," under fees and payments, item F, "Should the city find deficiencies in work performed or reported, it will notify the assessment firm in writing within 30 days of receipt of invoice and related report. And the assessment firm will remedy the deficiencies within 30 days of receiving the city's notice, which period may be extended by mutual agreement of the assessment firm and the city's representative." Okay? So in other words, we get a bill every 30 days from this firm and we have a very short window of time to identify deficiencies for the work performed in the prior 30 days. Otherwise, we have to pay them no matter what. Okay? Now, then the question becomes, who's minding the store? Who's supposed to identify those deficiencies and let the assessor know that there's a problem? So if you turn to the next page, page three, under section four, Assistance and Control, it states that Peggy Stino, Director of Administration, acting on behalf of the city, will be responsible for communication within the city's organization as related to all issues originating under this agreement and will monitor, evaluate, and coordinate the work of the assessment firm. So it's pretty clear in this contract that the responsibility for monitoring the work and evaluating the work falls under the Director of Administration. So I got my notice of assessment many weeks ago, maybe four weeks ago, right? And I looked at it, found a lot of problems with it. And I asked the Director, Peggy, "What have you done already to check this work?" She did not reply. Did not reply. I then sent an email to the mayor telling him that I asked this very basic question and that I did not get a response and would he please correct it? The mayor did not reply either. Now, let me just tell you what I found, looking at just my one property. So to simplify it, what we should be getting from our assessor, there's three basic things. You have to collect information about every property. So my property has certain square footage, it's a certain style, has a porch, has a garage, whatever. That data has to be accurately corrected, collected on every property. Then in mass appraisal, the assessor takes that data and they run it through what's called a valuation model. So this is a computer model that when you shove the data through it, it comes up with a number on the other end. And what makes assessing work is those models being fed good data and they've properly been configured, which will result in a house like mine comes up with a number. And then if your house is similar to mine, the number will come out similar. So if we have a, you have the same size home, perhaps I have a porch, you don't have a porch, my value will be a little higher because I have a porch. You have a garage, you don't have a garage, your value will be higher because you have a garage. So this is what creates the uniformity, this is what creates the fairness, the fairness in our tax system. Okay? And then lastly, when you have this data and you have these valuation models and you run them through, there's a test that's done to make sure that the values are coming out, they're replicating market values, that they're correct. There's a test. It's called a ratio study. That means that when we look at the work our assessor's doing, we have to look at, do we have good data? In this case, the data was converted from some other system. So the question is, did the data get converted completely and correctly? Was there stuff left behind, stuff improperly converted? That's going to create bad data, which is going to screw everything up downstream. Okay? Secondly, do we have good working valuation models? This is tested with this ratio study, all right? So looking at my property then, I asked the assessor for, "May I see a copy of the records from last year under Tyler's old system and I want to see a copy of the records for this year?" So I could just look at them side by side and say, okay, here, this data, this piece made it over, this piece made it over, this piece is missing, this piece is wrong. Okay? There's a lot of problems with the data conversion. So who checked it? Who checked the data conversion to make sure that we ended up with the same data that we left off with? Evidently, nobody. Because my house is not particularly interesting, it's not particularly unique, and yet there's lots of problems with it. Okay? Then I asked the assessor to test the models, said, "Well, how did you arrive at the value of my home?" And the assessor replied that they used the sales comparison approach. Now, the sales comparison approach is what you would typically see in a bank appraisal, has a subject property, bunch of comparable properties, and then it has differences between them. Right? And so I said, "Well, can I have the documentation that showed how you arrived at that number?" They couldn't produce it. And they couldn't produce it until they contacted the Department of Revenue and asked the Department of Revenue, "What is he looking for?" Yeah, big red flag. They don't know how to do sales comparisons. And they certainly didn't use a sales comparison approach to value my property if they didn't know what it was. Big red flags. Lastly, I asked them for a copy of our ratio study. Now, this study should have been done before the notices were mailed, right? Because they're working on calibrating the models, making sure values are coming out right. And so they run this test and they do this test before notices are mailed. So I asked them, "Can I have a copy of the ratio study done before the notices were mailed?" They could not produce one. They did not know what one was. This is the company you've hired to do our assessment work and nobody's minding the store. So my message to you is, somebody's got to mind the store. Somebody's got to be looking at this contract and making sure that the work is being done correctly. And based on my evaluation of my property, it certainly doesn't look like it. Now, I've asked for a copy of all of our property records so I can see that stuff got converted, see whether things are, problems with my properties are epidemics, okay? I have not received that information. I did receive an email an hour ago, two hours ago, from the assessor saying they'll finally agree to give it to me, although they're way past any kind of reasonable deadline for an open records request. So we'll see. But my reason for coming to the comment period today is to tell you that we have a contract with a firm that has a very shady background and nobody's minding the store.
Be careful. Be careful.
I can prove that. I gave you all evidence of their background.
I'm telling you to be careful.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Understood.
It's Mayor Olson.
They have a checker passed. Let's just say that. Okay? So you didn't do your homework when you hired them and now nobody's minding the store. That's a problem. And if you let it go too long, you'll never get to press reset because that conversion, once you run that conversion and you start working on your 2023 values, there's no going back and redoing the conversion. Okay? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your opinion.
Yeah.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else? Seeing no one else, seeing no one else rise, I will close the citizens' comment period. We move on. Item B2 is a proclamation declaring September 2022 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Franklin. I point you to the second to the last, whereas, "Whereas men who you know may either have the disease or have had the disease and go through life without notice." Just point that out to people. Okay. Item C, approval of the regular meeting minutes of August 2nd. Any additions or corrections? Barber and Hopeur, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. We have no hearings, no organizational business, no letters and petitions. Move on to item G1. Let me turn my page here, page 11. Resolution conditionally approving a certain land combination for parcel one at 8857 West St. Martin's Road. Nelson and Eichman, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. G2 is adoption of a resolution imposing conditions or restrictions for special use for gazebo park to add some garages for their apartment complex. Barber and Hanneman, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. G3 is, geez, the City of Franklin Community Development Block Grant Program for 2023. Madam Director of Administration.
So this item was brought to you last month and we talked about a certain level of funding. Since then, I've been through some training with the Milwaukee County CDBG Department as well as looked at a lot of the history. We don't run the home repair program that's run by the CDBG Community Development Block Grant Department at the county. And I was told that in 2022 so far, there's been $80,000 committed for the home repair. That means there's a very large need in the community. Now, that's not every year. Last year, it was 24,000. But we were asking for anywhere between, or the last five years, anywhere between 40 and 45,000. So I just talked to the county a little bit and I just said, you know, "What do we have to lose by asking for more for that home repair, knowing that we're getting it and using it very quickly now?" And they encouraged me to go ahead and apply for more. So we have now changed the Franklin Home Repair Grant Program up to a $65,000 request rather than the 42 that we originally asked for. So I'm just asking council to approve that change so that we can go through with the formal process, which is due at the end of this month.
Any questions for the Director? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
Just one quick thing. I did send out the Milwaukee County, I think you all got it, the Milwaukee County Community Development Block Grant brochure and information. In case if you want to share that with any of your constituents, please do that. Please point them to us or the county to get connected.
Yeah, it is a good program. When I was an alderman, I used it a couple of times and pretty easy peasy for the people applying to. And the, I mentioned it last time, the CDBG administrator is a Franklin resident, so. Okay. G4, page 43. A resolution to certify non-traditional project administration and delivery for the 116th Street project. This, let's, our department be the boss. Mr. City Engineer.
At Shell, we have the CMAC grant, is the acronym for it, to provide for the trail on what we call 116th Street Trail. For us to do the process, we had to, you have to certify that we understand the rules and requirements, that you have an employee on staff that can oversee the project. I had to go through several modules of training to prove that, if you will. So it's, they need to see this so they can process the grant.
Their motion to approve the resolution.
I'll move.
Second.
Hopeur and Eichman, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. G5 on page 87 is a resolution to execute change orders, number two for 70,000 and number three for 30,000 to prepare the St. Martin's Alternative Decent. Nelson and Hanneman, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. G6 is a goodie. author neighborhood pavement and utilities. Who wants this?
Don't look at me, this is yours.
So last month.
Mr. City Engineer.
Last meeting, actually, we talked about this project. The idea is that we'd like to survey the neighborhood and find out if there's any interest in utilities. If there's a significant interest in utilities and you think you'd like to do a utility project, let's combine that with the road project. The roads are getting to the point where they need to be, if not next year, the year after, very soon. They're ranked ones and twos. So the last thing we want to do is to repave the roads and then five years later, we decide we want to do big utility projects. So let's try to avoid that. If you have any changes to the draft letter, we can discuss that or let me know.
That was my point. I think I'd like to move forward and get a lot more feedback and get going on this, but I definitely want to remove the utility discussions for the next 25 years piece. And I understand that, I'm looking at this, just want to, the moratorium is what concerns me. And I, talking with a few of the neighbors, I've kind of got a mixed bag, but obviously everybody's on board with the new road, wishes to get a new road. But I would caution not, I would caution committing or having them out there that we can't, that they would be unable to get any changes. It's just too long of a period of time. I understand your position with the five-year basic. If something's going to happen in five years, we don't want to redo a road. However, I think that's a big sticking point. So I mean, definitely move forward with the road, but I would like to see that moratorium piece taken out.
Mr. City Engineer.
I believe I took the moratorium part out of the letter. Did I not?
I'm just reading B. And still making reference to it. As long as we, as long as it's not being referenced, we're good.
It just says, "I'm not in favor for at least 25, 30 years." It says like that a moratorium per se. So in 15 years, you could change your mind. There's no moratorium per se. Just, the idea is ask, are you willing to wait a long time? I'm not sure how you want to word that otherwise.
And like when I had discussions with some of the neighbors that I've talked to, you know, the road is priority one. Everybody across the board is all on pace. Some are up in the air about what's going to happen with the utility part of it. Doesn't seem to be a priority now to anybody, except that I've spoken with. But if we could, I don't know, if we can even legally say that we're not going to touch any sort of utilities for 25 years, it's kind of questionable in my mind, but at least we want to get the new road in first and then.
So I guess the purpose was, I asked them if, for a long time, meaning 25, 30 years, and then you're still making the decision. You could, there's no moratorium per se required.
I would caution my colleagues on the council. What you're going to hear from people is, "Yeah, I want the road. I don't have any problems with my sewer septic and my well's just fine." Well, there have been failing wells and septics in that area recently. So we have to make it clear that the road goes in and if it's got to be replaced, it's not fair to the other citizens of the City of Franklin to have to replace it twice in a near period of time. And so I just urge everybody to go with caution and a bit of skepticism. You know, they're wonderful people over there and they deserve to have roads just like the rest of us. But we got to have our eyes wide open on this one. Okay? Alderman Nelson.
So Mr. City Engineer, if this was to move forward, what would the schedule be for replacement of that road?
Potentially, it could be next year. Again, these ranks ones and twos and they're right up there. We just have to fit in with all the other roads that need love.
Okay. And we would be determining the timeline this year, like by what, I mean, in the year, we would have some idea of when it would go through? That was another question to us.
The magic question is, how much money will you give me to repair the roads next year?
Okay. Well, I guess that kind of dovetails into the question about how long this moratorium would be. I mean, if they're not looking to do the road till 2025? Or is it something that could actually be done in 2023? And I guess I'll just tell them to stay tuned for that.
So I would say there is a possibility it could, we could get it on next year. But I'm saying that without considering the other road.
I'm not looking to put you in a corner on this, just kind of looking at a basic timeline. Thank you.
Well, here's how that works. Glenn asks for $100 million for roads and then Peggy and I kick at it and then Denise will get it and he'll get somewhere around a million. So figure it out from there. If this is a one and a two, it's probably going to be close to the top anyway.
That's pretty bad.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say it's, I wouldn't make any commitments to that, but that's the reality. But I also point out, there's going to need to be some ditching and culverts and there's going to be more work there than just paving a road. So Alderman Barber, I saw your hand.
Is there a way of inviting them to do it at this time? In case you do have a failing well down the road? Make it, the language would be the invitation to come on board with it here? Rather than saying, "We won't do it," it's just saying it would be convenient to do it now. If you have any concerns in the future, we can't guarantee you what might happen in the future, but for right now, we're looking at doing something.
I guess if you read the letter, I didn't want to make any promises or threats, but I just said, "The common council values your opinion and they have a decision to make and they'll consider your answers in their decisions." So I didn't want to make any threats or promises.
Well, I'm thinking of more of an invitation than do it now, if you're thinking about it.
Well, I, you know, in some respects, I, if they don't want to do it now, that's fine. It saves us, you know, capital budgets for, you know, utility. I know. Saves us capital budgets for sewer and water extensions. Because quite honestly, it's not going to be a cheap endeavor. We have to figure out how to fund that. It would really be nice if they, if everyone said, "No, leave us alone with utilities." And then you make the decision to do roads, so we just have to fund the roads. We don't have to worry about the utilities, so. But again, last thing I want to do is in five years later, if I wake up and say, "Let's have utilities and tear it up again so we max the assessments," which means the city will have to pay to finish up the road part.
Is there a motion? Alderman Nelson.
Given the options in our discussions, are you looking at option A, being the most relevant and most applicable at this point? Or option B and just taking out the moratorium?
So I would suggest maybe, so I would suggest maybe the motion is to send out the letter for a survey and return to common council.
Alderman Hopeur.
That was, that was going to be my suggestion, but it wasn't as an option on here. So I would like to hear the feedback prior to you engaging in any further study on it.
Other direction staff, yeah, well, we'll send out the survey and return to common council.
Thank you.
For a discussion.
Okay. So the motion is to go out and survey the neighbors and return with the.
Yep.
Somehow I'd like to end, Alderman Barber, a second. If you can do it funny or whatever, but somehow make reference to the fact that it's not lost on the common council when a new road gets ripped up for somebody's sewer and we don't want that happening here. So, okay. On that motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Move on to G7 on page 101. Resolution for acceptance of stormwater facilities, maintenance agreement, and management of the easement for Victory of the Lamb at 11120 West Loomis. Nelson and Eichman, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. G8, page 119, is a resolution for acceptance of stormwater management facilities for 7543 South North Cape Road. Nelson and Barber, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. G10, there's a new, well, essentially a council action sheet at your table, at your place. There's a change in the middle paragraph of 31.3 million. Mr. Reggits.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. How's that? All right. Very good. Before you, you have a proposal to engage Milwaukee County for land participation in a stormwater management facility or stormwater basin, if you will. And the team that assembled this proposal would like to submit it to the county and that team includes the mayor, Alderwoman Hanneman, Glenn Morrow, and Peggy Stino and myself. And I appreciate, greatly appreciate, all their guidance and contributions in this effort to put this proposal together. And the proposal starts with some background on TID-8 or the Franklin Corporate Park. The park is on track to, you know, to create its forecasted increment through $138 million of current and planned development projects, including the Wongard Project, Saputo HSA, and Biller or Hickory Properties. And that, that investment will generate $587,000 annually when it's completed and the TID-8 is concluded. It'll generate that revenue for Milwaukee County. And that we see in table two. Down to that. All right. Peggy, how do I rotate this? Is there a way to do that? Well, I guess maybe we won't be able to rotate that. Ah, there we are. As you can see from that table where we've accounted for all these investments and then the increment generated and then the revenues generated for the county, we see $587,000 annually that they would receive when TID-8 concludes and these projects have all been completed. And so we want to continue this momentum that we. And so we want to continue this momentum that we have going on right now. The park, the park and the TID is, is successful, but it's gotten kind of a slow start, you know, due to 2020 and everything that went on then. We didn't have the investment right out front that we projected, but we more than caught up with that. But TIDS are pretty sensitive to timing because you don't, you don't just add a year of time where you wait for increment to generate revenue. You basically add another year to the three years that exist before you start seeing revenue from construction. And so we want to continue this, this, this momentum that we have and, and we can do that by utilizing some county land to the west of Corporate Park for stormwater management in a basin that will help assure the growth and revenue for the benefit of all the taxing districts. And we can look at them and we'll rotate some more. As we can see in table four, these are the, these are the shares of all the taxing districts that will benefit from the revenues that are generated from the investments in TID-8 once it, once it concludes. And obviously we're all partners in this. You know, everybody has an interest in seeing this go, not only just for the jobs created, but ultimately for the long-term property tax revenues and base that we generate from this kind of an investment. So we would like to see some of the county land adjacent to the Wangard and Biller properties off of Hickory Street. That's basically comprised of undevelopable, undevelopable wetlands and woodlands be utilized for a stormwater basin. And what we would be able to do is we would be able to locate a stormwater basin on approximately 10 acres that's shown in map two. Right here, in this area right here is where we would look at locating that. And as you can see on the north side of that, we have flood plain and on the south side, we have woodlands that are restricted anyways. So this, this property is pretty well undevelopable. And what that would allow Wangard to do is, is add another 90,000 square feet of, of space in industrial and commercial building space. It would also support drainage for Elm Road, freeing up some drainage along the redevelopment route there and help with, you know, providing for redevelopment of the underutilized sites that are along Elm Road. It also will provide access and support to Hickory Street and to Biller Development that, that's located there. And so we've looked at alternatives for this and the least costly option that we have, which would be basically where you see on the map, you see a couple features there, a site that is accommodating a, a building that Billers would build. Or we could utilize that as the lowest cost alternative for stormwater retention. But what that would do is that would cost us dollars upfront and, and dollars in the long run. And then I'll, I'll jog up further to table, to our table one, which is on page six. But what we see is, we see basically between Hickory Street and the remaining Biller properties, we're looking at about $25 million of investment. And then with Wangard, we're looking at another $6.3 million of investment. You know, ultimately in the long run, we're looking at 134, well, $135,000 a year of county revenue that that would cost us or potentially could cost us if, if we weren't to go ahead and do this drainage basin. So, you know, the project has been, you know, reviewed by the engineering firm, firm of Rookert and Milky, and they've determined that the project is physically feasible. And it's, it's a project that wouldn't cost the county anything because they're just lending us the land either through an easement or a no-cost lease or they could even contribute it. The city of Franklin would operate the facility. So it's not costing them anything and we just think the logic of the concept would give them reason that Milwaukee County to consider it. And, and we ask your approval for the resolution to engage the county and negotiate and, and examine this project, this process.
Couple of things to point out. Thank you, John. Good job. Leave it there, please.
What's that?
Leave it there. As you can see, this column says acquisition costs. That would be the raw cost of the land. Biller would not let us just take that land and use it, yet there's no cost here because we have no concept of what the value of that property is in Biller's eyes. So actually this number goes up a, a bit. I believe this parcel still remains the least expensive based on the square footage available. So there's that, that item. Then if you go to the map, map two. That one, whoop, back up. That's the parcel, the Biller parcel as opposed to this parcel here. So hopefully it becomes immediately clear that there's a development opportunity there that's not available here. So you're going to make money there no matter what. This is the alternate property and this one has its own set of issues with it, but this is 15 acres, about four of which are developable. But you make it, but if you couple that with the property next door, you've got a pretty nice sized parcel ready for development as well as the parcel south of it. So burning that parcel doesn't make a heck of a lot of sense either. So, so the request is, is that you authorize staff and Alderwoman Hanneman to, and me to go visit with the county and see if we can convince the Parks Department and the administration to join with us in a partnership that recognizes that the county has a financial investment in this and give us an easement on the property.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Ruggets, for all the time and, and effort that was put into this as well as everyone else. And sort of to just restate what the mayor said, the bottom line is to, with this report and request is to demonstrate to the county that this land is more valuable to them in the long run as a stormwater retention pond than it is to just leave it. I mean, it's not developable. So this is an alternate that is actually makes it more valuable for them. So I would move to adopt the resolution. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't want.
Alderman Holfer, and I'll point out that $134,000 is roughly the salary of a sheriff's deputy with benefits. Alderman Holfer and then the city attorney.
I just wanted to thank everyone that, John and anyone else that worked on the presentation because it was very done, very well done, concise. It answered my questions and I think it goes a long way to making a compelling case that this is the best viable option to do this. So thank you.
One other point, I heard some comment about 521 acres and some weird numbers relating that. The 521 acres is the gross acreage of all the undeveloped land in the TID district. That's what it is. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. City Attorney.
I do not see a resolution in the common council packet. I do not believe one is necessary with regard to authorizing officials to negotiate with another governmental entity. So a motion to me would cover it.
Okay. Alderman Hanneman.
I will need to authorize certain officials to engage Milwaukee County and pursue negotiations for participation of the county land in establishing a stormwater retention basin for TID-8.
I would second that. I'm sorry.
The city attorney is saying that I should name the officials. So that would be Mayor Olson, Mr. John Ruggets, Ms. Peggy Stino and myself, Alderwoman Hanneman.
Alderman Holfer. Second. Discussion of that motion. All fit, all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you, John. G10 is, oh, this is yours too. G10 is a CGI digital production renewal agreement for website video tour. It's supported by advertising. Mr. Ruggets.
So CGI Digital Communications is an online marketing company that produces webpages, community profiles for web posting, videos and social media. They produce the video tours that are currently on the city's homepage of their website and similar contract like this was executed with them before and we're just looking for an extension of that agreement. And, and really it's the same process as we did with Business View earlier this year. Digital Communications will send our letter that, that we've endorsed and edited to Franklin area businesses and they'll sell advertising to those businesses for posting on, on these video tour pages. So it won't cost the city anything and the current videos are good quality. So I'm assuming they'll use some of the B-roll from that, but, but they're a good value. I mean, they're, they're deep.
Ikeman jumped you. It's moved by Alderman Barber, seconded by Alderwoman Ikeman. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. B-roll is a technical term, not, we'll talk about it later. G12, Franklin 2022, 23 reading event. Did I pass one up? I apologize. Oh, G11. Okay, yeah. It was Freudian. G11 is consideration of a city, citywide, city-sponsored Facebook page. Miss Stino, you want to do this one?
I can certainly get it started. This came up back in June, I believe June 21st, when we were talking about the code of conduct and there were some questions on a Facebook page and then there was a motion as you see in the council action sheet to proceed. I, I think there was a lot of conversation that night. The, the research that I have pulled together is this research with regard to social media. I think there's a lot of risks for the city. We certainly have some communication issues we want to work out. I'm just not sure social media under the guise of the city is the most appropriate way to do it just because of what we all know, we see on social media on a regular basis. And when it comes under the city's name, there's a much different meaning and requirements than it would be for just anybody who has a social media page. So city attorney and I have talked about this numerous times. We've both gathered our own information, I think came to the same conclusion, but I think I'll let city attorney say a few words as far as the details.
100% agree with the director of administration. You have all the League of Wisconsin municipalities' presentation materials from just about two months ago, from the assistant league council and a few years back, from city attorney Aunt Daramian. And the bottom line on the presentation a couple of months ago was all of the First Amendment rights and that governmental Facebook pages are free speech pages and they're essentially out there in the real world. And I'm not stating this as a legal term, but out there in the real world, nothing gets deleted unless it's extreme, extreme, extremely bad. And that's kind of a short summary on it. And the city already has an information website that provides just about everything and including audio, videos of these meetings, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And so it's up to the common council, but again, out there in the real world, theoretically this could maybe require extra staff support to be provided and no moving forward without a further detailed study, et cetera, as to all of the terms and conditions that would have to apply. And yes, I understand that through the years, some departments have created website or Facebook page type information and staff is going to deal with this at this point because of requirements involved.
Alderwoman Hanneman.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. And thank you as well, Miss Stino and Mr. City Attorney for the comprehensive information that was in our packet we're reading this week. Lots of great information there and I think a lot of us can take heed on a lot of issues with social media. I agree with a lot of it. And I am someone who has always felt that more information is better when it comes to the government and, and the public, but I don't know that Facebook is necessarily where we would want to be. And I think we're putting the cart ahead of the horse a little bit with the notion of just going out there and opening a Facebook page for the city. I would in no way suggest that that's what we'd want to do for so many reasons. And, and primarily we, we just should not be relying on Facebook to disseminate information from the city that's important for people, especially, and because it really only catches a small portion of our residents. So it shouldn't be considered a primary vehicle. That being said, I do believe going forward, and maybe it's something that we should put on a future agenda, we should maybe start setting some policies for communication. And, and as the city attorney said, we do have some departments that are out there. And I think some of our departments who are on Facebook are, are doing a fine job of it, but there are some pitfalls that we really should be paying attention to and making sure that the employees who are managing these Facebook pages are properly trained and know what to look for. And, you know, they might benefit from seeing what was in our packet tonight and reading through it. So I think to that end, we really should start putting together some social media and public communication policies before we would make any decision to go out there on any sort of social media platform as an official governmental entity.
I'm just wondering if we took a look at, other than the city of Oak Creek, if there's other municipalities in the area that have their own Facebook page? There's none that I'm aware of. Also, if this were to be considered, we could talk to Oak Creek and get some guidelines and so forth. However, I just wanted to share, I mean, it's an incredibly time-consuming position for somebody to per se watch or babysit the page. From experience that I've had in the past, from a non-city related page, the Franklin area community page is admin on that, the amount of time and hours spent in a week that go into that, and there were six people that were running the Franklin area community page, you know, of maybe the numbers of 12, 13,000 people. There's a lot of background time that's invested that most people are not aware of and so forth. So I just think it would be a very time-consuming position, just for one. While it is a great idea to get information out there to the public, I just feel this is something that we shouldn't be looking at at this time.
Just to respond, Alderman Ikeman, talking to my counterparts, most mayors and village presidents run from Facebook pages as city-sponsored pages because the amount of information imparted versus the amount of trouble that happens because you've imparted that information is just not worth it. And Oak Creek's got a full-time staff member to do communications and there's got to be better things for that person to be doing than monitoring comments on Facebook. So anyway, Alderman Nelson, sorry, I jumped in. And then Alderman. And then Alderman Barber.
Thank you, Mayor. Interviewing this, and this was very comprehensive, this is very well done. The information was great. It opened my eyes to a lot of other concerns, and I listened to my colleagues, I listened to other people that have, you know, shared the cautionary flag. And I think that's one of the things that, right now, with our staffing situation, to put something else like this on someone else's plate is a big deal. To echo Alderman Hanneman's comments, or maybe it was from our discussion, what I've heard in the past was, you know, the development of a policy is kind of a big first step if, if, underlying, we're going to do this. But I too am not real crazy about having to have staff take on this responsibility right now and have to, you know, worry about comments Saturday morning at 3:00 in the morning from some basement dweller that attacks one of us, that we want to make sure that these things are handled timely. So I have no problem basically slowing this down big time and taking a look at things in a much more macro view and then making a more of an educated decision because at this point right now, after the research that I've basically done, just following up on this since last week, I'm not a real fan of it. And before I just say blatantly no, I would like to maybe learn a little more, but, and I agree with the mayor, I bet this, I mean, this can be really ugly from the liability standpoint and as a city and, you know, of all the controversial things that are, people are misinformed on, and then the attacks that some of us get by these basement dwellers, I won't use the term keyboard cowards because I've offended some, even though it was accurate. I just want to kind of slow this. So I yield.
Alderman Barber.
I think, two years ago, I don't think many people knew about social media. It wasn't a factor. It was just some people that were engaging in silly communication or fun or whatever they called it at the time. But I've seen it grow. I've seen it become weaponized. I've seen it become more work than I think it is actually worth at this point to have the monitoring going on. I guess my last election, it required me to watch quite a bit of the time and be observant of what was being said at all times. I don't know if the departments that have it in the city have their own Facebook, have experienced the pitfalls. I mean, I don't know if there's been anybody that's talked about that, but their experience, I don't know what they're doing with it and who has access to it and what's able to be said. So I guess I'm not in favor of moving forward at all on it, unless we do look for the research that's been suggested.
I would just concur with my fellow alderpersons. The recommendation that was in the, presented to us, said that they recommend putting together a team of multi-jurisdictional, so to speak, experts in doing this, human resources, IT, all those different kinds of things. Pitfalls aside, our staff is full. I mean, we've got a lot of stuff going on, and I'd hate to see them start delving into yet another project and come back and say, what do you want me to put on the side burner until I get this done? So for that reason alone, I would not be in favor of it at this time.
Thank you for that, Alderman Holfer. Alderman Nelson.
I'd make a motion to table at this point.
With no timing.
No timing.
Seconded by Alderman Holfer. Discussion. All those in favor of that motion to table and definitely signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Show that as unanimous, please, Madam Clerk. Unanimous being five ayes. G-12 is, on page 263, is 2022 and '23 shredding events, Mr. City Engineer.
If you recall, common council asked us to try a shredding event this year, and we did, as directed. I'd like to give a lot of credit to Sergeant Heinz and Street Commissioner, our Street Superintendent Kevin Schleter. They did the lion's share of the planning and logistics of getting this up and running. We moved the event from the library to City Hall, and it was hindsight, that was a good thing, library had another activity that day that was quite well-attended. We didn't realize to the extent that our shredding event would be popular, I suppose you could say. People started lining up early before we opened the gate. When we opened the gate, we had one truck, and speaking of social media, there was a lot of criticism on the pace of the line and so forth. So when we found out that the truck was basically going to fill up along before it anticipated, Sterr Cycle helped us out, threw another truck in for free. So they came over, and we got two trucks running. Things seemed to go a lot smoother. You gave me a budget of $2,000. If you count the overtime for DPW budget, we were over that by about $400 and some dollars. So the question is, do you want to continue it again? We're not really sure why it was so well-attended. Was it well-attended because there's a pent-up demand? Or maybe it might be bigger next time because maybe more people might know about it? I'm not sure. One thing we did not do, we did not check for Franklin residency. That was a suggestion by Sergeant and Superintendent that maybe we continue with a four-box maximum for every donation, so.
Wait a minute, back up.
Yes.
You kind of skipped over that.
Well, I was going to go back to it.
You didn't check residency?
We did not.
And the sergeant and superintendent recommend that we do?
No, that we recommend we do not. Recommended that we keep the four-box limit, otherwise you're going to have somebody show up with a pickup truck and take all day to unload them. The other issue is, they do recommend that we check residency before they get into the City Hall lot, so therefore we can.
You said do not.
Did I say it?
Yeah, you said do not.
Do, that we do check residency. I'm sorry.
Yes.
Make sure that we don't have any non-residents using our facility. So.
Make the motion for option B with the three bullet points. Okay, let me restate that because Alderman Barber's mic was not, he made the motion to instruct staff for option B, one annual shredding event in the year 2023 and beyond, implemented with the recommended changes, which were check IDs, four-box limit, and that was it, right?
In order of the minimum.
And two trucks, man. Well, I would urge you not to put that in your motion, because what happens if it tails off? And paying for two and only using one. It's up to you, but I would say don't do that, but.
I understand, I wasn't there the day that this occurred, and I understand that two trucks help immensely, so I would order two trucks.
... getting the second truck. I said like for the second go-around to include the two trucks.
Instead of unloading two cars at once, we can unload four cars at once.
So those, I'd include all, I'd include that.
Okay.
And do note this could affect rates, when we talk about rates for solid waste.
Two trucks, it was seconded by Alderman Hanneman. Any other discussion of that motion? See none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. G-13, I'm going to do a little commercial here. When I took office in 2014, we had zero emergency preemption switches in the city. And the Assistant Chief, Police Chief at the time, came to me and said, we should do this. Yes, we should. Fortunately, City Engineer Morrow found some money in the grant, and we started putting them in. Now they're on just about every intersection. And it's, pardon me?
I think, yes.
Every signalized intersection. And I think our public safety officials, firefighters and police officers believe that they are a definite benefit, and it's great. They improve the safety of our officers and firefighters as they go through intersections. So, having said that, emergency vehicle preemption equipment at Forest Home and St. Martin's Road, Mr. City Engineer.
As you're well aware, the county is looking to do Forest Home next year, and there is still one signal, I believe, might be the last one in the city that designed preemption equipment on it. And there are preemption equipment on the other two signals, but because we're responsible for our equipment, we have to still do conduit and so forth for the other signals. But, so this cost that I include here, $35,000, this will be a new equipment for St. Martin's and also the equipment necessary to make the changes on the other two intersections.
Move to approve option A.
Okay. I ask for an amendment to that motion that says, and direct city staff to go look for grant money to help pay for it. The preemptions that we've installed have cost us $8,000 a signal, not 35, so.
Motion without amendment.
All right. Beautiful. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Before we finish this, that does not, that does not make the purchase contingent on a grant. That just means, go get it, go look for it. Any opposed? Motion carries. G-14, temporary street closure for the August 26 volition movie.
So moved.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Last year, it was marginally successful. It was a lot of fun. Let's do what we can to help publicize it and make it a bigger success this year. Okay, we'll move on to miscellaneous licenses. Alderman Hanneman.
Yes, the license committee moves the approval of all items on the agenda tonight.
Sir, second. That's a big agenda. All those in favor of that item signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Move on to H-1 is vouchers. Is there a motion approving city vouchers with an ending date of August 11th, in the amount of $2,364,257.70, and property tax disbursements with an ending date of August 11th, 2022, in the amount of $1,066.75, and payroll dated August 12th, in the amount of $429,715.86, and payments of the various payroll deductions in the amount of $232,488.31 plus city matching payments, an estimated payroll for August 26th of $430,000, payments to the various payroll deductions estimated $540,000 plus city matching payments, and approval to release payment via wire transfer to Bond Trust Services, in the amount of $689,867.50, and to approve release to, of payment to Carlson Racine Roofing, in the amount of $41,280, and approval to release library vouchers not to exceed $25,000.
Move to approve vouchers and payroll.
Barbara and Holfer. Madam Clerk.
Alderman Holfer.
Aye.
Elderwoman Eichmann.
Aye.
Elderwoman Hanneman.
Aye.
Alderman Barber.
Aye.
Alderman Nelson.
Aye. Motion carries, five ayes, no no's, one absent, no abstentions. With that, we've reached the end of the agenda that's public meeting, so we're going to, it's end of the broadcast meeting, and we're going to go to test pattern after Star Spangled Banner, Dr. Cadaverino. So we're going to stop the streaming portion of the meeting and go to closed session. Is there a motion to enter closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85, sub 1, sub G, to confer with legal counsel for common counsel who is rendering advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to the subject litigation, which happens to be BPC Land, County Land Limited, and to re-enter open session at the same place thereafter to act on such matters that discussed therein as it deems appropriate?
So moved.
Second.
Holfer and Eichmann, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Nelson.
Aye.
Alderman Barber.
Aye.
Elderwoman Hanneman.
Aye.
Alderman Eichmann.
Aye.
Alderman Holfer.
Aye.
We, motion carries, we're in closed session.